I'd like to call to order the January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen Lake Mills City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Cooper Buckholz had called us earlier and said he will not be able to make it tonight.
Okay. I would like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Legions and also stay standing for a moment of silence following it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'd like to have a moment of silence honoring Captain Chris Truman at this time. And I would point to a personal privilege, as we all miss Chris, I also want to recognize and thank all the people, people in this room, people not in this room, people outside the community, as well as in our community, who put forth so much effort and so much caring to make his ceremonies and his remembrances very special. I'm sure he was very pleased as he watches from above. If we have been seated at this time, we will continue with the agenda. Corrections or approval of the city council minutes of December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Do I have any motion?
I move the minutes of December eighteenth as presented.
Second.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to correspondence, item number six. Any council member would like to begin?
I had one call, and it was in reference to the Sandy Beach reconfiguration, just some questions that were asked, whether or not we really need to move the boat launch and reconfigure stuff down there.
I also had a similar phone call on Sandy Beach on the boat launch.
My, and I received one call encouraging us not to move forward with the branding, to spend the money on that. Thought we could use the money towards debt reduction and keeping our budget in control. And I received a couple of emails about the Sandy Beach, asking questions and raising concerns about the plan and the proposal, and asking for public input, and also received one letter today on the Sandy Beach.
I had similar contacts this week. I also did have someone who informed me that in some communities, the school district and the municipalities work together on the branding so that they're similar and actually look very much alike but are just a little different, and that that is becoming common in different cities that they've been in. So I think it's something we should also look into. Any other comments from the public?
I think we all received a letter today on Sandy Beach.
Yeah, I did not get a chance to look at it.
And with a number of questions about proposal at Sandy Beach, and also we had an emailed letter from Patricia Cicero about the boat launch and certain items related to that.
Both of those letters would be directly related to our next work session, right? In two weeks? Or am I?
No, branding is it on the next one.
No, no. Oh, what?
Branding is next on the.
Is that the only thing on the next one? Oh, we're not discuss, okay. All right. I guess part of me wants to. Sorry about that.
Well, they would be related to tonight's agenda.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. Any other correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move to item seven, Questions and Public Comment. Just a second here. So, "The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda," sorry, "if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments. Please fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium before you leave the podium. If you'd like to make public comment at this time, please come up to the podium."
Good evening.
Good evening.
And then would you give your name and address?
Yes. My name is Vicki Avery. I'm the daughter of Tom and Diane Reynolds, who reside at three sixty Sandy Beach Road. A cover letter and list of questions and concerns were given to all of you before the meeting this evening. Okay. The boat launch, we did this thirty years ago in nineteen eighty-eight. Same renovation plan, same concerns, same questions, letters written, attorneys hired, council meetings attended, and hours of research and homework done by individuals affected by the proposed plans. The renovation never came to fruition. This is a case of history repeating itself. I object to the proposed plan for relocating the boat launch at Sandy Beach and request that this vote or decision be tabled until more information is provided to the public and the submitted questions and concerns be addressed. No consideration seems to have been made for the impact of this boat launch move and how much it's going to have impact on the residents and personal properties adjacent to this project on the west end of the park. As quoted in the leader recently, "We haven't really done a design yet. We have a concept." Well, how can you vote on a concept? Residents of Sandy Beach Road and the public need to be better informed before we move forward on a decision. We would like access to plans that are drawn to scale. I haven't seen anything that actually has a legend or how big structures are going to be, how long the boat launch is going to be, dimensions of parking lots and exits and I'd just like to highlight some of the issues that we included in our letter that you have. This is just a handful. Obviously, the foot traffic, the safety to and from the lake, and personal peers for residents, children, toddlers, whatever, of Sandy Beach Road. There's going to be heavy truck and trailer traffic on Sandy Beach Road in front of the parking lot, impeding residential driveway access. Emergency vehicle access is another concern. Turtle migration, fishweed beds, and the natural habitat plants that are currently along the shore. We would like to know what the boat launch and gas tank safety regulations are, distances from private peers that that installation should be, parking lot lights, man's traffic control at the boat launch. Are Lakeview disappearing due to plantings and pontoon boat parking along the existing fence line? We were wondering if there was only one layout of this proposed plan, or were any other options I also think it would be important to have some sort of advisory committee to provide input, and this might include members of some existing Rock Lake committees, and maybe one or two Sandy Beach Road residents. I understand things need to be upgraded and some changes need to be made, but this is a multimillion dollar project which needs to be looked at from every angle possible before a decision is made. Thank you.
Make a comment to the public. This is to everybody overall, but thank you very much. This is to everybody overall. I don't know where the word has been skewed, I think, because there is really no plan to do anything yet. The only thing that we will vote on tonight is whether we want to ask and see if a grant could be given to us. That's all we're doing. We're not committing to making any changes. We're not committing to putting a plan in action because we don't have that information yet. We're not even anywhere near that. All we're doing is seeing if there is some grant money out there that could help us with this when we get to that point. So we aren't even there yet. So I just wanted to put that out there so everybody understands we're all on the same playing field. There is no plan. The only thing that's out there is a concept of this is what we could do if we potentially get some grants to do it.
Any other comments from the council? Okay. Any comments from staff?
This, I agree with the statement generally. I would say that, you know, it kind of kicks off the start to the next grant, which will actually move us into more of a design stage, which will then start incorporating more, you know, how you want to do it.
But it doesn't commit us to anything.
No, it doesn't make us do anything.
We are committed to anything.
It will allow us to start surveying the property.
Yep.
And it will allow us to, you know, the second grant has to have a much more detailed set of presentations, so basically from tonight till the June first deadline, we're going to start doing basically what she said.
Yep.
We're going to start developing plans and looking at all that.
Yeah.
The process is not in place.
Right. Yeah. This is a very, very, very beginning. All we did is come up with a concept to say, if we decided we wanted to look at something, these are some of the things that we would look at as a community. But we haven't committed to anything, and the only thing that we're going to commit to is looking to U.S. Fish and Wildlife and ask them, is there a grant available to us?
Yeah, the next grant on June first is actually the DNR boat launch grant.
Yep.
That's the one that has to be more detailed.
Right. And that could help us potentially with those boat washing stations and things like that. They both good.
Right. But, you know, they ask for public participation. That's kind of something you design generally through the process of the initial engineering. At some point, generally, we have something that says, yeah, we can build this, or no, we can't, and then we throw it out there. We generally hear comments, like we did with the dam downstairs.
Right.
And then we go back, look at the options, then we scored them in a second meeting, and then you guys made a decision. That was, tends to be more the process timeline that we were thinking about.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. And thank you for waiting.
Sure. I'm Frank Gallagher, in reference with my son-in-law that resides at three sixty-eight Sandy Beach Road, which is next door to the Reynolds. I appreciate the comments. I guess some of the things that, not only that were already presented and what you just addressed. I reviewed the council meeting in December and watched that, and I believe the, I'm sorry, I forgot your name from strand, but it appeared, or what I heard was, once the paperwork goes in, that that ramp can't have a major change in the development drawings that were originally done. That, I mean, that statement was something to the effect of, you know, we can't move it five hundred and fifty feet in the other direction without causing problems. I might have misunderstood, but I, it was one of the letters that were received today by Mr. Fields, I sent through that I had a number of concerns, and I've been involved at Rock Lake and Lake Mills since nineteen seventy, so I've been around for a long time. One of my concerns that I had on here was the E. coli that shut the beach down. So, you know, there's things that, I guess I want to make sure at some point in time that we don't get the grant money, or you get the grant money from the DNR or Fish and Wildlife, and I don't know if the vote tonight signs you and seals you to having to accept that money so that you have to do something with the ramp without anything, you know, really set in stone, other than you perpetuate the decision that something is going to happen.
Tonight's grant isn't that complicated. So this one would be submitted in early February, and it wouldn't be that. The one that goes in on June first is a much tighter one, and that doesn't actually get awarded until September, and then you don't have to accept the money if it, something changes. So any vote tonight would not lock us in at this point. Once they'll send, the state will send us a document probably sometime in October that would say, okay, if you accept this grant, this is what we expect to see, and that would be laid out in that document.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. And Mr. Fields has, you know, the list of all my concerns and questions that I would like you to at least, you know, take a look at and possibly at least, you know, use that as some form of a guideline. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say a special thank you to both of our previous speakers. This is exactly what city government is about, and want to thank you for taking the time to come, taking the time to write down your thoughts. It's very, very important if city government is going to work, that people do what you're doing, and I want to commend both of you for coming tonight to speak to us.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it too, because, you know, while we'd like to be the experts, we aren't, and a lot of folks out there do this on a day-to-day basis, work with lakes and other things that we talk about up here, so I really appreciate people giving us ideas and make sure that we're looking at the things that we're supposed to, you know, bringing up the Indian burial mounds, things like that, which we're all aware of. We know that we have to go through certain hoops and things like that to do it, and we appreciate you guys, everybody, bringing the stuff up to us.
And we're just five people, like you. We don't know everything. Even Steve doesn't know everything, although he's pretty smart. But between all of us working together, we can probably do a pretty nice job. And with that, I will pass it to our next speaker. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm Wendy Catalani Davies. I reside in Lake Mills on Ironside Road, and I have a family cabin on Sandy Beach Road at three forty-six. That's been in the family for sixty years. I hate to say that, sixty years. And I guess I just want to say that I haven't kept up on everything, but hearing what the people have said, I certainly agree with it. I only understand grants a little bit, so I think you're saying your first grant is kind of a grant for feasibility?
The first grant is a, I won't say it's feasibility. They're both covering all the costs, so it's design and construction. The first one doesn't have the structural details that the second one has, so it's kind of like what we have already, they take that, but if we make substantial changes to that, they're not as concerned, because we haven't gone out and actually surveyed the property. We haven't done the detailed concepts. We've done some planning and researching some of the details that, you know, Parks and Recs has and some of the other people that we deal with out there have. And so it's more conceptual. This allows us to take it to the next stage, which would be, this one is, we submit the documents we have, we fill it out, it goes in, but they're very flexible. The second one, they want to see more of the details that the first person talked about, you know, the size of the parking lot, the exact location, the design specifications. But even then, we're mainly committed to preliminary engineering at that point. We're not ever committed to, until the council actually passes that resolution that says, that we receive from the agencies that says, yes, we're going to build this, and this is what we want to do.
So I understand, then you have to turn in some documentation of your concept?
Yes.
To get the grant. And so I'm just going to comment on what I know or don't know, is that it appears to me that, I'm going to say the west side, toward Madison, where the kind of the Marina part is now, is where a lot of your residents on Sandy Beach Road enjoy a view for sixty years and sometimes longer. I actually, not that you want to live in the past, but I, we bought our cabin before there was even a gate there. So I don't know if you've considered that maybe it should move the other way so that you're not in front of everybody's house, you'd have the same amount of space, just move everything that way, driveway could be straight in. And I don't know if you've thought about that, but I think it's a consideration you should take, and I'm happy to be on a committee if anybody gets to that point that you're looking for one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else wish to speak?
While we're waiting, Mr. Fields, apparently you got an email that had questions. Is that something you could share through the city clerk so that we could all get a copy of it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll email that to everybody this evening.
No, go to the clerk.
The clerk.
Because if you email to all of us, that's a problem.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. My name's Mike Wolf, and I live at three five six Sandy Beach Road. We worked together with the Reynolds on the first sheet that we submitted to you. You say it's not even a plan right now, you're just doing it for the grant. I would appreciate just knowing what the timeline would be. Now, I don't know how you would publish that through the dealer or how you would do that, but we need to know, you know, when there's decision points, because we get a lot of rumors, okay? And we're the public, and we just don't know what to think. I even have guys that come, take pictures of my house, turn around, take pictures of the lake, and that's kind of unsettling. Think about it, your own home. Somebody just drives up, takes a picture of your house, and turns around, you don't know if they're casing you or what they're doing. So there's a lot of concern because it's not transparent what's going on. I don't know if the DNR's been involved. That's one of the rumors out there, is that we've already got approval from the DNR, and what I'm hearing from you, no. So I think what we need to do is we need to work together, and I would be part of a committee member if you want, as well as Wendy. And I want to echo what she says. If you think about the layout of the beach, the west side is the narrowest part, and the east side's the widest part. Okay? If you have the boats coming in and dropping the boats, and then they park, they have to park all the way down on the east side after they fill up, and then boats probably sit in there waiting while, you know, while they get their car parked and come back to their boat. It just logistically isn't there. So I'd like to know if there is a freeze point in this design in which you would take input from citizens and from logic. I'm an engineer retired. You'll freeze the design at some point, and before that, we would like to have some more input. Okay? Thank you.
That's up to you. I mean, I made a suggestion, similar to what we did with the dam, but that's really up to you guys, how you want to do that. I mean, you're the decision makers.
Yeah. I think it'd be a great idea.
Yeah, we, you know, we designed the dam, and then we went to a public hearing, and there were some questions, and we came back with three options, and then went out of the options, they scored those, and what we built is what was, scored the highest. So, you know, you could go through that process. I think that, you know, they're probably going to look at this and see the, you know, like the whole scope, like the parking isn't going to be all the way over on the east side. The boat launch and the parking for the boat launch are totally segregated from the rest of the beach.
From everything else.
On the west end, and everything on the other end is more to the east. So you're going to have, you're going to have more of a view on the west end than you are on the east end, under any condition. So if we moved, if we moved the launch to the east end and moved everything that we were putting on the east end to the west end, they would lose more view then. But we've already considered that. You know, we considered the gas tank. We've already told you, we don't plan on putting in the gas tank unless you decide you want to. So those are the kind of conditions that we've considered, you know. You know, Rob hasn't wanted that gas tank for years. He hasn't been crazy about the boat launch and its location, so these, and how we've structured this was trying to keep it, you know, use the clear areas for clear. There's no wide area on Sandy Beach Road. There is no wide area on Sandy Beach Road. It's been a beach for quite a long time, highly used. I don't think that we should look at that from that perspective, but when we hit that point and we start looking at the options and saying, this can go here, and this can go here, and that can go there, or whatever, yeah, we can do a freeze point, say this is what we want to do. Okay?
Given the two grants we've been talking about, and I know this is not, I haven't given you any warning of this question, but if you had to predict what month a freeze point might be available, or that it would be logical to do, what month would that be?
Late March.
Yeah, or early April.
Yeah, we'd want to, if we did a late March, early April, it'd give us like thirty days to get back to another public hearing, a public input meeting, and then be able to take that consideration and incorporate it into the design before we have to have it submitted. Because then you're running, you're running pretty tight, because you basically have to finalize the design.
If that's running pretty tight, should we move it back fifteen days?
Well, you have the problem of the initial design, too. You have to get out there, and you have to do the survey, and you have to lay everything out on the CAD, and you have to get everything laid out on the first one and go through all the work, so.
So you're, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying that it's going to take time to do what needs to be done?
On the front end.
But we have to also do it quickly because we have the time constraints on the other end?
Right. So you, what I would think we would want to see would be one somewhere around the end of March, and then one somewhere around the end of April, beginning of May, and that would give us enough time to finalize the design and get it in.
And by end of March, are you talking about the second Tuesday, the third Tuesday of March for the second council meeting? Or are we talking about end of the month special meeting? Take a guess.
Well, we would do it like we did with the dam. So you, what I would think we would want to see would be one somewhere around the end of March and then one somewhere around the end of April, beginning of May. And that would give us enough time to finalize, finalize the design and get it in.
And by end of March, are you talking about the second Tuesday, the third Tuesday of March for the second council meeting? Or are we talking about end of the month special meeting? Take a guess.
Well, we would do it like we did with the dam. We would just have a meeting downstairs.
Okay, so it would not be at a council meeting.
And we'd have, we'd have all the design around the room and we'd allow, we'd invite people in, they'd look at it all, then we'd sit down and do a presentation. We'd have a give and take for a while and then we would kind of go back and, and look at what we've got and what the comments were, and then we make, we put together some options and then we, we do the same thing thirty days later, we take the, scored, we actually had sheets that they scored on at the dam meeting and then, and then we totaled those up and, and gave you the details and then you made a decision on which way you wanted to go.
If I was to ask, maybe we could change the process a little bit and have a designer be prior to that and let the open to people. Tom Reynolds and I came here in the spring when this concept was first opened up. But we were not allowed to talk. Okay, it was just one of those, here's the concept, this is what we're thinking about, bam. Now we're talking, too much for now, recent in time. If we move something up in the February, and then separate review.
What would you be reviewing, the concept?
The concept and maybe some of the, you know, the logic. We don't know where it came from, we know that definitely somebody didn't even launch a boat. Isn't thinking about boats being all day parts on the east side of the street. We always have them, having to be walked back to their homes.
Okay. Think about it.
Now, what we're deciding on tonight's agenda does not affect the decision on that idea.
No, no, that doesn't affect that.
But it would affect maybe the last agenda item.
It would, well.
Future council meetings and stuff like.
They'll recommend it for future agendas.
For future agendas, so maybe that would affect that.
Yeah.
I'd have to think about it, because he's talking about the concept and the logic, which is different than the design.
But I think a lot of people in town are talking about the concept and the logic.
Yeah, and I get that. So that would be different than looking at the actual design, but so if you were...
Okay, let's stop here, because I told you I was kind of springing this on you and I don't like to do that, but at least we'll ask you to think about that. Tonight, when you go to bed, and have it ready for eight o'clock tomorrow morning.
Yeah. I have, I have training tomorrow.
But one last thing on the questions that were brought up. I would make the assumption that anything new on that would go under the announcement section on the, the main website? Or would we look at putting a separate subsection of the website just for what's going on with Sandy Beach?
Oh, my God.
You don't have to answer that now, just something to think about.
Yeah.
To make it easier for the public.
For them to find stuff.
Let me, let me explain this, and Heather knows better than I do.
Is that possible, Heather?
We have to pick and choose what goes on.
Sure.
So.
Well, this certainly sounds pretty important to the people.
Well, we also have South Main Street of Mulberry.
Yeah, the heck with them.
Okay, we won't do that stuff. I'll have that noted.
Well, obviously, we don't have anybody sitting here tonight talking about Mulberry Street and South Main Street.
Well, they would be once they start digging.
I'm looking at the website here and I see this section that says, "Meeting Documents." Could be one, one of those be named, you know, "South Main Street", another hyperlink for something for Sandy Beach, and then have all the documents under there and...
What we do is, we do have a, a corner that says, "Construction," and it's a little thing.
Yeah, I see that.
Anything that's in construction, you go to that webpage and you drop to the next one.
Yeah, I do see that there, "Streets and Sidewalk." Yeah, that could, if we could add it there.
If people understood that, we were dropping those into that area, they could go there and get everything they wanted.
Nope, I think, I think that would work great for me, I don't know about everybody else. But if, if I was looking at this and wasn't part of the council and I saw that, that would make sense to me to have it underneath the project information.
Generally, if you Google it, you're going to find it because it's on our credit system website. So you Google the Sandy Beach report, or you Google any of those reports, you're going to find it. But we can drop it in there, as long as you're, you're comfortable with dropping to that second page.
Yeah, anything to make it in your face when you first go to the page and that project information is right there, so. Yeah, anyway, just some thoughts.
I think the more user-friendly we can make this, the better. And, you know, we have people here, I want to continue to have people here and people interested, because whatever we end up with will be better because of more input.
Yep, I agree. Come out with a better product. Sorry.
We're still in public comment and you would like to comment.
No problem, this is going to be very, very short.
Well, no, no, please say what you want to say.
My name is Jane Schimmick and I live with Mike at three five six Sandy Beach Road. And I just felt it important to, I guess, reiterate some of the other comments that were made regarding input from us into the, into the process, especially after hearing Mr. Wilkie's comments about views and how, whose views would be obstructed and how. I, I think he's got it totally backwards unless I completely misunderstood what he was saying. So I think it's really, really important that before anything else is done, that we have an opportunity to, to sit down with people that are in, you know, in this planning and design process and be able to voice our opinions. And I also am very willing to be part of any committee that you would form for this purpose.
And thank you for signing the sheet. So. Well, this is very encouraging. It's really nice to see people out there. I mean, we feel pretty lonely up here sometimes, so.
Just talk to ourselves.
Yeah, well, and, and you wonder if anybody's listening or cares or whatever. So thank you so much for caring.
Hi, I am Abby Carr. I am the granddaughter of Tom and Diane Reynolds who live on three sixty Sandy Beach Road. I also grew up living right next door to them at three sixty eight Sandy Beach Road. I feel that the residents of Sandy Beach Road care deeply about what the, what's being done with the land around the area, the view and the heritage especially. The cottage and my grandparents has been in the family for six generations. So we care a lot about what is happening with the area. And there's a lot of concerns with what the plan, how it's going to affect us and how it's going to affect the community. And I just think that we should be, have input in the, input in the planning and also be informed every step of the way, because we do care a lot about it and have many concerns. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up and speaking and... Very encouraging to see someone from your generation up there, because that's what we need. We're not going to be around here forever, you know. So thank you for doing that. Continue to stay.
Something I'm going to cut for Abby. She's a, she's a second year student at Stevens Point.
Good. Excellent. For those of you who are at home, if I heard correctly, our last speaker attends Stevens Point University in fish and wild, wildlife?
Water resources.
Water resources? Okay, good. So there's good information coming from somebody that we don't have, and so thank you for sharing it. Hope you can, you're home on break, I take it. So, well, maybe you can send us something as things progress here or share it with your family to share it with us. Maybe you know something none of us know, it's very possible. That's what we're paying tax dollars for our schools for. No, but anyway, please do share what you know. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak under public comment? I'm going to just say something, another personal privilege thing here, but I'm wondering, and maybe council can think about this, that maybe we want to, when we do a planning, it may not be at a council meeting, it might be a planning meeting that's more loose, so more people can speak or get their questions answered. I know time is an issue, but even if we can't all be there, it might be a good idea to do that. So it's just food for thought. So, otherwise, seeing no one else approaching the podium, I will move us out of public comment, closing that, and move to item number eight, City Manager's Report.
I provided you with two documents, which was the check register, so remember when the auditor asks. Right? And the PD Monthly Report. Today was the bid opening for Mulberry.
Oh, I forgot that.
It was six thousand five hundred and thirty-eight cents underbid. Underestimate or opinion, engineer's opinion of probable cost. So the total project was in at, estimated to be three million four hundred thousand dollars. And the low bidder came in at two million seven hundred and fifty thousand ninety dollars, but then you have to add on the engineering to come up with the engineer's opinion of probable cost. So that's the difference between the two million and the, and the three, or the two point seven, five million and the three million is the engineering cost. So we, we'll be, I assume we'll be moving forward with that, it looked like everything was fine. The low bidder was McGuire, they have worked in the city before, they did Elm Street out there by Culvers.
Oh, that's good.
Have some knowledge of working with them.
Where are they out of?
Monroe.
Oh. Okay.
We're still working on the fire department staffing study. We'll have some proposals to you at your next council meeting for changes in the fire department that we'll bring up. We've been, we actually notified and are starting to schedule a meeting with the Aurora Medical Director on potential changing of our medical director for the whole city, police and fire. EOC updates, tomorrow is our training, tomorrow and Thursday. We're doing four hundred?
Four hundred.
So, you going, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. We are...
It's ICS four hundred.
Oh, 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 okay.
It's a...
Training.
ICS is Incident Command System.
Okay.
And we're doing some work on, on coordinating of, of agencies for emergency management operations. I think they're almost all city people, I think we have one out of city person attending. I don't know if you know, we've started the process of trying to figure out how to start a K-9 unit in Lake Mills?
No.
And the Chief of Police has started looking at donation possibilities and costs and those types of things. So you'll probably start hearing more about that probably at the next meeting, because he's getting pretty far down the, down the road. We, I think finalized the union negotiations yesterday, WPPA Union Negotiations, so that'll be coming forward soon. South Main Street, we had a meeting with the South Main Street, or the Main Street Representatives, Katie and Alisa, to start getting ready for the processes that are coming up. We've put Brian Kane in charge of the liaison, so we introduced him, got all the emails exchanged. We talked about all the permitting that they would have to do for the signage and how the detour routes will be occurring during that. The contract with Lilande has been signed. They are preparing their schedule, which sounds like they want to start in March as soon as possible. The pre-con will probably be coming up shortly after February 12th, because February 12th at five thirty, they will be having a public information meeting downstairs. So those notices will be going out shortly. Like I noted, Mulberry Street was bid out today, it did hit the bid numbers, so I think that we'll be good to go on that and we'll try and be following up on that.
Will that February 12th meeting be downstairs?
Downstairs.
Here? I think you said that, but I was writing down the date, so. Okay.
LSL reporting, we have to take, every quarter we have to do forty samples and turn them into the DNR for lead sampling. If you hit two quarters in a row where you have less than three fails, you drop to twenty. We got noticed, I think it was today, was it today? Today or yesterday, that we have dropped to twenty. We've had two successive quarters where we had less, in fact, the last one, we only had one. So that's going pretty good for us. Radium, we finished our Packer testing and our second round of Packer testing. We have our samples, the well will actually be going back online here shortly. We're looking at six weeks for those samples to come back. Remember, our first round of sampling didn't go very well, so we, we had the well flushed. And we're hoping that that goes well. The, the inline, the automated meters, we have four hundred water and two hundred electric in, and we're trying to make a bigger push on that coming in the spring and the summer to get those taken care of. We're going to concentrate on the lead ones that we don't have done yet so that they'll do the meter and the lead inspection at the same time. We have about eighty-three percent of our required inspections done. And that was, that was at, just before Christmas. We're probably always past that now too. Cross-connections, we're pretty much done with that, that'll be in the sanitary report, but that's a continuing effort year-round. We have to keep those up and going all the time in order to have those reports ready for the DNR anytime they come in and do a sanitary survey. Corrosion control started today and we dropped the non-phosphate sample and are using all orthophosphates and then a test of the current city one. So that'll be moving forward. DNR was pretty pleased with that. Riverwood is continuing to move forward. The plats will be, the final plat will be on the Plan Commission agenda along with the zoning. The construction plans will probably be going out to bid very soon. We got a couple pieces of paper we need from the owner and then we'll probably send those out for bid. Other than that, I don't have anything else, are there any questions? I did have some questions that were asked about Sandy Beach boat launch fees, and we don't separate fees. They're just listed as boat launch fees. So we don't currently separate it out. It has been proposed in one of my memos that if we move to a, a special revenue source, that we might do more of that at that point. Because at one point, when they originally purchased it, it was under a special revenue fund and then when they paid the debt off, they dropped it out. So I don't know if you remember that, but... Anyway, it's all right.
But do we keep track of all the boat launch fees? So that we've got a figure for all the boat launches, wherever they are?
We have fees that, it go, boat launch fees, yes, we have that. We have the Sandy Beach, in the Mill Pond, seasonal passes. We have the Sandy Beach, and the Mill Pond, seasonal passes, and then the, the pickup fees.
Maybe for next meeting, somebody could just shoot together a memo about that. I'd appreciate it, just so we see what kind of revenue we're getting off of boat launches in general, because if we only had boat launch, you know, if, if we had a boat launch only in one location, chances are, all of the people who are launching would be at that one location, so if it's split up several locations, at least it's a figure that's telling us something, it's how many people are launching boats on Rock Lake and the city of Lake Mills.
Yeah, we, I'm looking at it, and we have somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'm done.
Any other thoughts before we move on? Sure sounds like we're keeping our municipal water and departments over there busy, really busy, because of all the different things that were, I mean, I've been on the council long enough, and I've never heard a report like the one I just heard, with so many different things that have to be reported to the DNR and watched and surveyed, so, would like to compliment our staff on working very hard.
I know I've mentioned this, but Flint has changed the whole water scene, and, so if you read any reports, I, you know, I get them all the time, water utilities are facing a huge expense, and so you're gonna see water rates that are going up, well, triple-digit water rate increases nationwide, so it's, it's something where they're, you know, the burden of running the water districts with the drop in water usage that's going on is, making water districts and water utilities have a difficult time, so, I don't know if you remember reading one about the Madison one and what they had to go through, but...
About that. And I think, though, you know, people, they're not happy about that, but I think the general public wants to make sure our water is healthy, is good, I mean, and if we have to pay more for that, I don't know too many people who would say, well, no, I don't think I want to pay anything for my water to be good for me, I mean, I just, I've never got a phone call like that, so...
We have, we give people the option of replacing, when we go by, of replacing the private lead service at the same time, and we've gotten a substantial number of denials, so that they're willing to live with their lead lateral service rather than pay the cost of replacing it at the time.
Well, to each their own, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council for Steve, otherwise we'll continue with our agenda. And, okay, acceptance of minutes of Public Works Board, December 11th, 2018, those will be placed on file. Item 10, Council Business, Miscellaneous Licenses. We have requests for a tavern operator's license from Jennifer, for Jennifer Hansen. I'm sorry, I think I did your job. So, do you have any that you want to present? You say it, because you should be the one.
We have one tavern operator's license for Jennifer Hansen before you tonight.
Okay, so, council, how do you want to handle that one?
If I may for just one second, I wrote a memo on this last week, there has been an amendment to that application, I know that you received that amendment this evening, I just wanted to make sure that all of you were aware of that. There is one change with regard to the way my memo was worded, specifically that the amendment was provided for you.
Okay, so the changes on what we have in front of us tonight meet some of the requirements that the earlier one did not?
A full disclosure has been provided at this point.
Okay. So, would someone want to make a motion for this tavern operator's license?
I move that we deny the license based on that the applicant doesn't meet the statutory requirements for tavern operator license.
Okay, there's no discussion on that, is there? No.
Well, you can discuss it, I would advise that you don't.
Okay. Would you call the roll on that?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
No.
I neglected to say that the clerk needs to put in writing to the applicant about the reasons for the denial.
Motion passed four, one.
Okay, moving on to our second request, I'll let you read it this time, like I should, for the second one.
We have before you tonight a license application for a second-hand jewelry dealer from Countryside Jewelry here in Lake Mills, and it is a renewal.
Is there a motion for that license?
I move, so move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. To call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five, zero.
Item B.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Would it be possible, because we have significant public interest tonight, to move Resolution 1905, Agenda Item F, to the top of the agenda for what's remaining of our business?
You want to do it before the appreciations?
Why not?
Okay, oh, so, all right, we will, do we need a motion for that?
I think you should.
Okay, someone want to make a motion for that?
I move that we move Item F to the point in the agenda where we're at Item B right now.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Got a second, motion and a second, any discussion other than what we just had? Okay, all right, seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five, zero.
Okay, so we will now go to Resolution 1905, and would you read that resolution for us, please?
You want the whole thing read?
What's your recommendation, council, on this? Do we need to read the whole thing?
I would, there seems to be public interest in order not to.
Please do.
Sure. Resolution 1905, Sport Fish Restoration Grant Program, United States Fish and Wildlife Service, City of Lake Mills, located in Jefferson County, Wisconsin, resolves as follows: Whereas Rock Lake is an important resource used by the public for recreational activities, including boating and fishing, and enjoyment of natural beauty, and whereas the city is qualified to carry out the responsibilities of management, enhancement, conservation, restoration, and protection of Rock Lake as a resource for the surrounding community, and whereas the Lake Mills City Council hereby declares its intent to apply for the Sport Fish Restoration Grant Program with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service to be utilized in the relocation and updating of the boat launch located on Rock Lake at Sandy Beach Park. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, the City of Lake Mills requests the funds and assistance available from Sport Fish Restoration Grant Program with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, and, two, the City Council hereby authorizes the Lake Mills City Manager to act on behalf of the City of Lake Mills to, A, submit an application to the United States Fish and Wildlife Service for the Sport Fish Restoration Grant Program for management, enhancement, conservation, restoration, and protection purposes, and, B, execute all necessary documents and applications and submit in an effort to secure available Sport Fish Restoration Grant Program funding, and, C, take all necessary actions to undertake direct and complete and approved Sport Fish Restoration Grant Program approved project. Be it further resolved that, the City of Lake Mills will meet the obligations of the Sport Fish Restoration Grant Program, including timely application and publication deadlines, and meet the financial obligations under the terms of the Sport Fish Restoration Grant Program. The City of Lake Mills understands the importance of a continuing protection and enhancement program for Rock Lake and intends to proceed in accordance with that goal.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Resolution 1905?
So move.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? So we can discuss it if for...
A second.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, we'll now be open for discussion.
Is this resolution, a resolution that we're required to adopt in order to proceed? You know, all the wording in here, because Paragraph 2C says that we're going to take all the actions necessary to undertake direct and complete the approved project, and under the be it further resolved that, it says that the City of Lake Mills is going to carry through all of the financial obligations associated with the grant, it kind of sounds like it's a done deal tonight.
Well, in applying for the grant, we do have to submit a plan, it may be subject to change, but this is the starting point, so...
But this, this implies that by doing this resolution the way that it's worded, there isn't any stopping it at this point if they grant it, because we have already told the City Manager to carry out everything that needs to be done to complete the project and that we're going to fund it.
If the grant is applied for, the grant is received, and then decisions are made to expend that grant, once, once you receive a grant, you don't necessarily have to use the funds, correct?
I'm not familiar with this particular grant, maybe...
Maybe, Brandon, do you have any more information there?
Well, it's a federal grant, so the application, though, has to be very thorough. I thought it would be an improvement program.
Could you go up to the podium?
Yeah, we can't hear you. Can you also introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name's Brandon Herbert, I work for Strand Associates, we're the consulting engineer for the City of Lake Mills. So this grant program is federal money, if the grant application is February 1st this year, so we have two weeks left to submit it. It's an annual deadline, so there is no other opportunity later, every year, February 1st is the deadline. I talked to the woman from the DNR who helps manage this program, kind of on behalf of the Fish and Wildlife Service locally, and she said that typically it takes about a year before you find out whether you get the money. I don't know if that really answers the question, but I just thought that that information is important for everybody to understand as you go to vote on this, to kind of some of the timeframes involved. In terms of, it is a required resolution, the exact wording, there's a, there's a boilerplate resolution in the application, I'm not sure what exactly, if you need to include specific language in there, otherwise I'll consider it void or not, I'm, I'm not sure, but this does follow that, that boilerplate.
So if we, if we approve the resolution tonight, it doesn't sound to me, anyway, that we have an opportunity to say no when the decision gets made a year from now.
Well, my understanding is that when you submit this application, if they say that, yes, we're, you know, we are going to award you the grant, that then there's a, an agreement kind of situation where you can say, well, actually, since we applied, we've changed our mind and thank you, but no thank you, I don't think that passing this resolution ties the city to actually accept the money. There's a, some signatures and whole agreement that has to be, like any grant, there's, there's grant agreement paperwork that would come at some later time.
This is almost the exact same one we did when we were applying for the grant upfront, but if, and we were awarded that grant, we passed this resolution, we were awarded that grant, and then we decided not to take it, so, it, if you remember, that was the, out here, so it's, it's, doesn't lock you in, but it, it wants you to be committed to the program if you, it wants you to think about how committed you are to the program.
Which grant were you just alluding to? The one for what?
The removal of the buildings from the...
Oh, yes, okay, now I'm with you, I just couldn't quite catch what you were saying. Okay.
To your point, though, Vicki, if there is language that you'd like removed, I think we're at a point where that could be discussed.
Well, if, if we removed some language, would it make our requests for the grant null and void? No?
No, I don't think so, what we ultimately need is, if you're going to move forward with an application for the grant, you need a resolution that gives authority to the City Manager to apply for that grant.
That's essentially what it does.
That's essentially what it does.
But I do agree with Vicki, I think the way it's worded, and I don't think there was any intent, but it does sound to me, too, like we're doing this, which, that isn't where we are.
Right.
It might be possible to then eliminate that sub-Paragraph C, and maybe change the be it resolved that, maybe put in there a...
May meet the obligations, instead of will?
No.
No, that won't do it, huh?
To apply for the grant?
Just leave it at, you have authority to apply for the grant, that doesn't bind you to accepting the grant or expending the funds if awarded.
So C would be to take all necessary actions to undertake, to apply for the grant?
Well, Paragraph B already covers the application, that portion of it, so I don't think we're harmed at all.
By removing C.
Theoretically, by taking out C, no, my, my concern then, if we took out Paragraph C, if we could also change the wording a little bit under the be it resolved that, and meet the financial obligations under the terms of the grant program if the grant's awarded and if the city accepts it.
Accepts it, yeah.
So then there's another step, that if they award the grant, then it would have to come to the council for our approval.
For acceptance.
They always send that out anyways, every grant we've ever gotten, they send out a required acceptance.
But I think it's, I just think it's cleaner.
Yeah.
Could we do it in two, two amendments, one to take out C, get that done?
Could we just do an editorial change with the approval of the maker of the motion and the second?
Well, I'm sure our staff would like it clear.
What I'd actually prefer is one motion, that makes those two specific changes.
Okay.
Yeah, I move that we delete Sub-Paragraph C under two.
Okay.
And that we modify the be it resolved that clause to, to add additional language that, after Restoration Grant Program, put comma, if the grant is awarded and if the city accepts the grant.
And I'll second it.
Okay, and I'll give staff a moment to write that down.
Does the city attorney concur that that probably meets what it is I'm trying to accomplish?
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, I'm comfortable with the language, but it brings up a different issue in my mind. The third whereas, perhaps you want to remove language regarding specifically relocation and updating of the boat launch unless that's necessary at this point, I don't think that that's enforceable, it's, it's, it's not a resolution at that point, it's... It's more, this is our idea, but those grant funds could be used for a number of uses. It's just the plan, the concept that's going, or that is planned on being submitted for application for this grant, does contain the bolt launch transition. So that's why that's included. I guess I'll leave that to you. But on your two statements, the amendment that's in front of us right now, no problem whatsoever.
Well, I think either way, you're relocating it east or west.
Yeah.
It's very nonspecific, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to amend deleting Item C and adding, could you read back what we're adding to the second part?
So, under the be it further resolved, the first part, you complete the sentence, Sport Fish Relocation Grant Program. Instead of a period, you're adding a comma, if awarded and funds are received?
No, accepted.
And accepted?
Okay. By the city council.
Yeah, I have to-
Back to the city council.
Funds are received and accepted by the city council.
No, if awarded and accepted by the city council.
If awarded and accepted.
Yeah.
And chances are whoever's receiving this resolution won't even notice that we made changes.
100% agree.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, now we're back to the original resolution as amended.
Correct.
Any other changes? Otherwise, should we ready for roll call? Roll call on the resolution as amended.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, and we will see what we can do to make sure that this stays in the forefront of people's information, so that you all know what we're doing. Please use the website and let us know. If you can't figure it out, either call City Hall and ask. Heather is here tonight. She knows exactly what we did, and she can probably answer your questions, but if not, you know, staff, other staff can, and if not, we will try. And if we don't know the answer, we'll find the answer for you.
And by the way, is the proposal, I can't recall, the proposal for Sandy Beach, is that at the library? People could look at the document.
Yeah, everything we do is at the library.
That's what I thought. So go to the library, take a look at it, it's there.
Yeah, it's probably easier to Google and pull it off the website.
Yeah, it's, it's-
Whatever.
If you have the paper, that's-
In case you don't use the computer, you can go to the library and see a hard copy.
Yep.
Is what we're saying. So, and it is there. I think Doug, you even checked last week, didn't you, or the week before?
Well, that's, I checked, a document's there, but-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Not specifically the Sandy Beach one.
Well, we try to be as visible as we can for everybody. If we're not succeeding, you need to tell us, because-
I'm sure the library can round it up for you if it's not out on the table.
Okay, so that's all on this item, correct? Okay, moving on. Now we will move back to Item B, Resolution 1901, Recognition and Appreciation of Service for Alan Milbreth. Would you read that, please?
Resolution 1901, in appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills from Alan Milbreth. Whereas the city council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Alan Milbreth for his 24 years of loyal service to the City of Lake Mills and its citizens, and whereas Alan Milbreth has served the Public Works Department of the city with a desire to provide the highest level of service through his valuable talents and expertise as an electric line worker and line foreman, and whereas Alan Milbreth has devoted numerous hours to provide positive contributions to the operations of the Public Works Department while exhibiting the highest level of loyalty to the city and enthusiasm for his profession. And whereas Alan Milbreth's dedication, attention to detail, professionalism, adaptability, and ability as an electric line worker and line foreman have made a lasting and meaningful contribution to the City of Lake Mills. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of Alan Milbreth and extends best wishes for an enjoyable retirement.
Okay, Steve, we want to-
Alan worked, Al worked in the street department when I was here, and then he made the transition to the electric department, started out as an apprentice and worked up into a lineman and finally foreman. Put a lot of years and effort in, had the ability to do the technical work that's required of a lineman, so it was pretty substantial. My real first knowledge of Alan Milbreth was, I received a letter notifying me that I had an interview in Lake Mills from a Betsy Ramsey, and then I got notified that I had received the job from an Elizabeth Milbreth. And so there was a connection there that I picked up pretty quick. I was a little confused initially, but eventually I picked that up. So I've known Alan the whole 20 years I've been here.
I move adoption of Resolution 1901.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? Anybody else wish to make any other statements? Okay.
I appreciate all the years of Alan having to get up in the middle of the night and go fix somebody's power outage. I think people don't realize that there's a real person there that has to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think he was really happy when they fixed the box across the street from my house, because that went off and off and off and off, and then they finally fixed it, and now it doesn't go off all the time, but it was kind of a frequent flyer there, so. He along with the rest of the staff.
Okay.
And hard to replace people like that, right?
Yeah, very hard for us. We're at the low end of the spectrum as far as pay in that category, so, you know, Alan was one of the first apprentices. Al was one of the first apprentices we had, and now that's almost all we have, so.
Well, no other comments? Call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
So, thank you so much. Taking us to Resolution 1902, Recognition and Appreciation of Service for Richard Hines. Would you please read that?
Resolution 19-02, in appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills from retired fire chief, Richard Hines. Whereas Richard Hines retired from his role as fire, as chief of the Fire Department effective November 30th, 2018, and whereas the city council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Richard Hines for his 37 years of loyal service to the Lake Mills Fire Department, the City of Lake Mills, and its citizens, and whereas Richard Hines has served the Lake Mills Fire Department as the chief of the Lake Mills Fire Department for 28 years with a desire to provide the highest level of service through his valuable talents, training, and expertise, and whereas Richard Hines has devoted countless hours and immeasurable effort to provide positive contributions to the operations of the Lake Mills Fire Department while exhibiting loyalty, dedication, leadership, and enthusiasm in his role as firefighter and chief of the Fire Department, and whereas the dedication and commitment from Richard Hines to the Lake Mills Fire Department has provided a lasting and meaningful contribution to the City of Lake Mills. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of Richard Hines and extends best wishes for an enjoyable retirement from the position of chief of the Lake Mills Fire Department.
Okay. Is there a motion for Resolution 1902?
I move adoption of Resolution 1902.
Second.
Okay. Steve, we'll bounce it back to you.
Rick has been the chief as long as I can remember, and he worked full-time and then functioned as the chief, so there was kind of discrepancy between chief and deputy chief, but Rick worked through that and continued to be the chief for many years. He is stepping down, retiring as the chief. He's still on the roster of the Fire Department. You'll notice he was at the funeral in his uniform. He will also be working for the city. So while we want to recognize Rick for his service as the chief and all that he's done for the Fire Department, I did want you to note that it's not the type of retirement that like Alan is fully retired and collecting retirement.
Okay, and he's working in the streets depart-
Street department.
Okay, so we will see him?
Hopefully.
Huh?
Hopefully. We haven't-
Oh, that's not a done deal.
Well, we've all come to an agreement, but at this point in time, he's still kind of-
Okay.
I got other things I want to do.
Okay, so, we hope to see him there, and, and we do definitely appreciate all his time and his commitment to the City of Lake Mills over the years. And so, any other comments? Okay. So, seeing none, let's call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, thank you so much for all your service. Moving to Item D, Resolution 1903, Recognition and Appreciation of Service for William Hudson. Would you read that, please?
Resolution 19-3, in appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills from William Hudson. Whereas the city council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor William Hudson for his years of loyal service to the City of Lake Mills and its citizens, whereas, and whereas William Hudson has served the Public Works Department of the city with a desire to provide the highest level of service through his valuable talents and expertise for the past 20 years in both the streets department and the wastewater department, and whereas William Hudson has devoted numerous hours to provide positive contributions to the operations of both the streets department and the wastewater department while exhibiting the loyalty and dedication to the city and enthusiasm for his profession, and whereas William Hudson's attention to detail, professionalism, and ability as a problem solver have made a meaningful and lasting contribution to the City of Lake Mills. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of William Hudson and extends best wishes for an enjoyable retirement.
Do I have a motion for Resolution 1903?
I move Resolution 19-03.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion. Steve, back to you.
Bill also started out in the street department and then moved to the wastewater department, so he had a number of years split between the two services. Rick, or Bill, had an engineering background, industrial engineering background, and didn't enjoy that, and so went to work for the city. But his real love was racing motorcycles, motocross, and that's why he's retiring. He's so beat up physically that he can't perform the job anymore and has opted to retire.
Oh, wow.
Well, we've appreciated Bill while he's been here, and we've got him to stop riding motorcycles.
Yeah.
This is an issue for him.
Okay, well, we're gonna also miss his input on the city staff, and has his position been filled and with-
No, none of these positions, well, yep, none of these positions are filled yet.
Okay.
I mean, like the fire chief, I'll begin with a proposal at the next meeting for a series of strategies there. We're advertising for lineman, apprentice lineman, bookkeeper, and then Bill's job in the wastewater. We've modified his job description a little bit, but, so it might have a little bit different name, but his position is basically being advertised. And those went out Monday? Last Monday?
Yeah, Monday. Monday or Tuesday.
So they're on the website. If you walk past the front-
We'll see him on the bulletin board.
They have little signs on the, on the desk there when you walk up, on both sides, so you'll see those. They'll be advertised in the paper and appropriate job bulletins.
On the city website.
Okay.
Which Judy Kennard, who replaced Mary, has taken another job and given her notice, so we have a temp in, working for Betsy to help, try and help get us through the audit and carry over to the next, and then we do, we are advertising that position, so.
Wow, okay. Sad to hear, but life does go on. I hope we can get somebody good, but we'll miss her, too. So, and that makes your job a little harder.
A little bit, yeah.
That was what you said when you came in my office that morning.
That's right.
She knows how to walk the top, or top, whatever. So, any other discussion on Resolution 1903? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, and thank you also, Bill, for your work for the city. All right, we've already covered, oh, no, we go on to Resolution 1904, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing, and let's get to that. Would you, no, on that one, hold on, I gotta get to that one. Um, do, 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 do. Okay, how much of this do we read?
I have just the dark print.
Well, I mean, do we just read the title on this, or do we read, yes, just read the title on this, please?
Resolution 19-04, Resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
Okay, and Betsy, are you a spokesperson on this one?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you want to clue us in on where we're, what we're doing here?
Certainly. This is a resolution that we need to do to, it's a requirement of the U.S. Treasury Department. We are going to be borrowing later this year, and we will be making purchases prior to that, before we get those borrowed funds. So we need to declare that we're going to reimburse ourselves for the expenditures that we make prior to receiving those borrowed dollars. That's all that this is doing. It doesn't lock us into having to borrow any dollar amount. I put a dollar amount in there, which I believe is as high as we could go with what our budget is saying we are going to be doing. If anything changes, I'll have to bring something before you again. If it would go higher, if it would go lower, then I wouldn't. But you have in an attachment, the listing of items that are already in the budget that would be covered under this borrowing.
I can tell you that, like South Main Street, we're going to be a little bit lower. Mulberry, we're going to be pretty close to right on.
Okay.
Don't know about the water tower yet, or those types of things, but-
Well, just the list on the item here shows you how busy we are.
Yes.
All the things going on. So, yep, it's a busy time. Okay, I need a motion. Let me get business taken care of here. Is there a motion for this item?
So move.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second from Vicki. Now, discussion on this? Anybody have questions for Betsy or company? Are you all comfortable with it? Are you all comfortable with it? Looks good to me, but I'm not an expert in this area, so. Anybody else have any comments?
No.
Looks okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, call the roll, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, and we're off to the races. Okay. Uh, we've already covered Resolution nineteen oh five, and that moves us to the second reading of Ordinance eleven ninety-nine. Would you please give us the second reading for that?
Ordinance eleven ninety-nine, amending solid waste collection and disposal regulations.
So am I correct that we are, the second reading is the third draft?
It, that is the, the second reading of the third draft, which is considered final right now. That probably should have removed the third draft. That is the one that you just did the second reading of. The amended version is in response to the council's request at the last council meeting, adding some form of regulation period regarding setting the bulk pickup items out to the curb. What I did is drafted a clause that incorporated a forty-eight hour measure that would establish public nuisance after forty-eight hours, if it's, or before forty, after forty-eight hours, if it's put out, if bulk pickup is put out prior to the forty-eight hour period prior to pickup. Does that make sense? So there's basically a requirement in that eleven ninety-nine A that bulk pickup not be put on the curb prior to forty-eight hours before the scheduled pickup with Johns. I share the same concerns as was expressed at the previous council meeting that, and Vicky and I have discussed this, that that's pretty ambiguous and pretty difficult to enforce because we're not privy to the scheduled pickup time. But it does establish a threshold, and if something has obviously been out for longer than that forty-eight hour period, it would be deemed public nuisance under that amended version. It would be subject to an ordinance violation and a citation. So that's the difference between eleven ninety-nine and eleven ninety-nine A. If you are considering amending to include that, that or some other language, this is basically a presentation, an idea of what it could look like. There are still ambiguities there. There's still the concern that we don't really know how this is going to functionally occur at this point, this change in the program. So it's maybe a discussion point at this point.
Now, this might be a stupid question, but I've always said there are no stupid questions. So when we get the third reading, will the, the crossed out subparts be gone?
The, the ordinance will be as it's stated, so stricken portions will be removed from ordinance.
So it'll be clean?
The, not, in the final project, when it's put into the code, it will be as stated. The ordinance that you're adopting contains the stricken language.
It will stay there?
Correct.
When we approve it. But then when it gets put in, it gets cleaned?
The language disappears from the code, but this ordinance will always read as this. The ordinance is separate from the code essentially. It's a document that is kept for posterity's sake.
Well, and then it also explains what we did.
Exactly.
Because it shows what's been deleted, gives some history. Okay, so. Other than that, I have no other questions. Does anybody else have any comments on the second reading here?
Well, you said some ambiguity, you explained that.
My concern here is enforcement of that forty-eight hour period. We simply are not privy, based on the relationship with Johns, it is going to be consumer and the service provider communicating with each other regarding when the scheduled pickup is. The city will not be privy to that knowledge. We simply won't. There's not any sharing of that, that information with us under the contract. And I don't think it's feasible for it to be...
We don't want to be either.
Correct. So what the forty-eight hours certainly does is provide a period of, period of time that if something is obviously out on the curb for more than that period of time, it is defined as public nuisance and it's subject to an ordinance violation and a citation.
But it's basically to establish, as I see it, a guideline for the, for Johns and for the, our...
For, for the consumer, correct, for our citizens.
Right, right. You got it.
Do not put your yardway, or your bulk pickup items out prior to forty-eight hours than the scheduled pickup time. Enforcement is another issue. We're complaint driven, and that's, a complaint from a neighbor, from a police officer's observations would be how the issue really comes to a head.
It's my understanding that really by establishing that forty-eight hour period, it's no different than what we've already worked under. It's just that what we worked under before, it said you could put it in, out, starting on Saturday morning, prior to the Monday pickup. So it's still that forty-eight hour window. It's just we don't know when that window opens and closes under the new system.
Well said, that's correct. But we never, we never went out and inspected anyway, so it would have been days after that. Now we just go out, we note it, we come back forty-eight hours if it's still there.
Do you need somebody to formally make the amendments so that we're working with nineteen ninety-nine A?
If it's desirable, yes. Right now, the, the ordinance that's on the table, that's been motion for approval and had a second reading, does not include the amended language.
I make a motion that we amend ordinance eleven ninety-nine to include the language that you suggested, thereby making it ordinance eleven ninety-nine A.
I'll second it.
Good. Yeah, I think that's good. Let's get that cleaned up. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, any other discussion on that, or is that an amendment?
Amendment to the ordinance, yes.
Okay.
The proposed ordinance.
All right, any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, would you call, the roll call on the amendment?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, so now, at the next meeting, everything will be where it needs to be for the third reading.
I believe you should have a second, a reading of the ordinance eleven ninety-nine A tonight.
Oh, okay. How detailed the whole thing?
I don't think so. Eleven ninety-nine A, so just state, so just restate.
All right, would you please read that for us?
Ordinance eleven ninety-nine A, amending solid waste collection and disposal regulations.
Thank you. You had me worried there for a minute. I thought we were really gonna have a long meeting. So we are now functioning off of eleven ninety-nine A for future reference. Okay. Any other discussion before we go on to our next agenda item? Seeing none, let's go on. Ordinance one thousand two hundred, adoption of Wisconsin municipal records schedule. Okay, let's get to that one here, and you may go ahead and do your reading when you're ready.
Did you want just the title of that one read tonight?
The title and, yeah.
And then? Ordinance one two zero zero, adopting the Wisconsin municipal records schedule.
Okay, now, who's gonna speak to this one?
I will.
I always have a motion.
Okay, let's do the motion, you're right.
We don't have a motion on these?
No, we don't have a motion, because that's an ordinance. We have to do three readings.
Correct.
So I just wanna know about it.
Okay, so this cleans up the code and adopts a newly adopted Wisconsin's municipal records schedule. So what the schedule provides, which is provided for you, is succinct directions on what records need to be kept for how long, when destruction of said records are appropriate. And after thorough discussion, the entire schedule has been recommended to be adopted tonight.
Do we need to rush this through? Like, do we need second, third readings on this tonight?
You don't have to, you could, I...
Does it help anybody?
I think that the clerk would prefer that it be read, to a third reading tonight. I mean, you're just adopting the state requirements. This really cleans up the code as well. I mean, this, it's much easier to work with them.
We're not doing anything of great significance. Well, if somebody wants to move for that, I don't have an objection.
I move we suspend the rules and go to a third reading.
I'll second.
Okay, we have the, let's vote on that.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, would you read the ordinance again, please, for the third reading?
Ordinance one two zero zero, adopting the Wisconsin municipal records schedule.
Okay, third reading, I need a motion to approve.
I move adoption of ordinance twelve hundred.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion further?
So, I started reading through this. Yeah, and obviously, you know, I deal with RDAs and stuff like that all the time right now, record destruction, things like that. I was trying to make, I guess, an intelligent decision on how much this affects us. What are we going to, are we gonna be storing more stuff longer now than what they had in here? Because it was, obviously, we said, you know, once bills are paid and that, we can destroy this stuff. Was there anything in there that made those RDAs out longer, making you keep them for years, or things like that?
Um, no, it's not with regard to RDA specifically. There are practice, first off, I think that the city's general practice has been to store and store more. We don't destroy documents at this point. Historical documents, resolution ordinances, et cetera, those are historical subject that is all held in perpetuity, forever. This allows for destruction of items after set time periods that are set by the Wisconsin Public Records Board, that recommended adoption of this, and cities all over the state are adopting this record schedule now. How it will affect us in practice, I'm not really sure. That's going to be quite an effort in the future with regard to our clerks, what is destroyed, what's appropriate for destruction. This gives us leeway to actually say, well, now we've adopted something, because previously the ordinances, our code, left a lot of this unaddressed. There was no real direction on what could be destroyed when, and that's when you kind of get into a hoarding situation. This creates a specific schedule that states when pertinent or non-pertinent documents can be destroyed. We've, we've destroyed documents twice in the past since I've been here.
Yeah.
And technically, one was a little bit before I got here, because when we moved from the old building to this building, there were some documents that were destroyed. And, I don't know, about two thousand and eight, we did some document destruction. But what we did was, is we went through, we itemized all the documents, and we submitted it to the state for approval. And then they approved the destruction, and generally, I went through the SHPO, the State Historical Preservation Office. And then they would send a letter saying, yes, we approve your destruction, and we'd send them out. But we have a lot of records that we probably don't need to keep, and as long as there's a list of what we can destroy without having to go through that process, it's probably a lot easier. But are some things gonna be kept longer and some things not as long? Yeah, maybe, but in the long run, I think it's cleaner.
Yeah, I agree. You know, it gives you, gives you set guidelines, so if lawsuits, things like that pop up, you're not digging for documents for, for years and years and years.
Ancient documents that we have no obligation to keep.
Exactly.
And if they did keep them, they would be subject to litigation, hold, or open records request. So this is an effort to streamline our storage system and create a willingness to destroy items after a set amount of time, after ample time. Either that, or we need to build another building.
Yeah.
We generate tons and tons and tons of records. I mean, I think we still have all Vicky's packets for years.
Not all of them.
A lot of them. And I think Jim has a lot of them, and...
I guess one last thing, does this take into account electronic records also, when you're talking emails, stuff like that? Or is that a total different subject for you guys at this level?
No, it does cover electronic records, but that's a little bit more difficult for us. We've, we've tried to do as much storage of electronic records as we can get. We don't have a lot of history in the electronic form.
Yeah.
So we've been, we've actually had someone typing up the eighteen thirty-eight minutes of the original city meetings, then switched to village, and then back to city, just to try and get a, because they're getting harder to read. And so having, and then having them, being able to search them digitally, you know, and you can pop in and search for a word, and it pops up.
Yeah.
So we've, we've converted a lot of minutes, all our resolutions, all our motions, ordinances to digital form. We have, you know, a lot of plans and applications of permits in the last, you know, probably ten years that's been that way, but it's been more recent. And then what we do with a lot of that is, is we attach it to the GIS. So if you click on our GIS and you hit the right spot, you pull up the plans. And we're trying to create this perpetual record of information that's attached. But, you know, there's some documents that, that after a certain amount of time, we could dispatch, but more and more, we're going to it, you know, like the budget reports and some of the financial reports.
Of course, if you want permanence, nothing like chiseling the ordinances into stone dabbits for permanence.
Digital does pretty good, but, but...
Depends on what you're reading, what, new inventions can make it obsolete.
Well, and...
The Romans did a great job on this.
And the storage system, you know, you thought microfiche was the answer, and then it went to DVDs, and then now it's just hard drives, the cloud.
Yeah.
So Heather, as the deputy clerk, has, you know, a lot of experience working with all of these records that we do create, and she brought up a very good point.
I was just gonna say, as the, like, the clerk and I being like the records custodians, this is really exciting for us, because one of the things that they did when they adopted this statewide policy now, is the state worked directly with the Wisconsin Historical Society so that a lot of those records that we would have to then make a big list of, and then bring it to council, and mail it in to the Historical Society to get approval for destruction, now we have this dedicated list that they've already waived their, we don't care, they can be destroyed without having to contact us, which is really exciting for us to know that that step is, has been taken care of, so that now we have a guideline to go by of, this can be destroyed without lots of, of other steps that are daunting.
Agreed.
So now, let's see if I'm, we've, we've moved to go to third reading.
Correct.
We are in third reading.
We completed third reading, correct.
And now we can take a roll call vote to approve this. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, go get 'em, right? All right.
I'll make some space.
Well, that takes care of that. Our recommendations for future agendas, do we want to say anything here about our earlier discussion with the public? Our, our next scheduled meeting is in two weeks, and that's only for branding?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna try and get far enough along in that meeting to go to a public information meeting.
Yeah, but we couldn't, that can't be that night, because that one's just for brand... No, I don't know if you remember my comment at the beginning, but I was particularly fascinated when I heard what I heard about cities working together with school districts and other municipalities in their area, so that the brandings were related to each other, which might simplify the whole thing and might cost less money if we're not reinventing the wheel. But I think we'd have to get permission from the school district if we wanted to do something like that. Would you not agree?
Yes, but I think we're working with the right people to get that done.
Okay, so that is something we can discuss in two weeks? Okay.
Yeah, what, what I was saying is, is we'd have that meeting that night, and then at night, we would set a public information meeting where we'd invite the public in to look at it, and review them, and give us comments. And then we'd review it again, and then we'd go back to a public meeting and say, okay, these are the ones that we've narrowed it down to, what do you like? And, and then go from there, if that's the way you wanna do it. But that way it gives us some opportunity to have some public input on the idea while kind of making an efficient process.
I would hope we could also, I, I am concerned, as have been some people in town, about the price of the branding process as being expensive. And I am one of them that thinks that's true. So I'm wondering if, is that anything that we can do anything about at that next meeting?
Oh, yeah, we can talk about it at the next meeting. She'll, she'll give us options.
Okay.
I mean, the original one, she had a lot of public participation. I asked her to think about scaling it back, so at the next meeting, we can definitely discuss that.
Okay.
The, actually, I think she'd given us a pretty good deal already, but, yeah, the more we scale back, the better we're gonna get, cause that, the initial proposal had a lot of public participation.
Okay. Is there anything else for future agendas at this point? Now, seeing none, meeting adjourned.